To using the speaker feature. At each of our board meetings, we encourage attendees to complete a sign in sheet, including their name and address. If at some point during or after the meeting, if you would like to electronically sign in, simply send an email to S. Donovan at Anderson Township dot org and that is S. D. O. N. O. B. A. N. At Anderson Township dot O R G. Before the meeting begins, I would like to identify the appointed zoning commissioners that are participating in this meeting, including myself, Brian Eliff Chair. Ben Henson is on the meeting tonight. He is the Vice Chair. Jay Lewis and Sarah Jonas is with us this evening. Other personnel are joining in the meeting via telephone, including Paul Drury, our Director of Planning and Zoning, and Sarah Donovan Planner, too. Each of us will do our best to remember to state our name before beginning to speak so that those joining us via the phone can follow along. We thank you for joining us and appreciate your patience and understanding during these unprecedented times. And I would just like to ask if there are any changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we did not have any.
Okay, okay, thank you, Paul. So we'll go ahead and proceed with our agenda and the item one is if somebody could please make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I had a question about the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't receive any materials about item five. Was something sent out?
I did receive a an email from the gentleman at the American Legion and the prior, I guess, resolution where that was approved. That must have got missed in your packet, but I would say, Paul, if you agree, when we get to that case, the materials aren't lengthy. I think that's something Jay, if you're comfortable with, staff could probably go over those meeting materials fairly promptly and you'd be informed on that.
That's fine. There just wasn't anything on the web as far as downloading. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there aren't any more questions, could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Jonas? Mr. Eliff?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. We also have minutes from March twenty second. Three of us here today, we're here on March twenty second, so we can go ahead and approve those if we can get consensus. Is there any comments or corrections to the minutes that were distributed? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve that I was at that meeting and Mr. Lewis and Mr. Henson were there?
I'll move that motion. Or I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Henson, roll call, please.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Jonas?
Abstain, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Eliff?
Yes. Okay, Paul, and then I guess we're ready for item three on the agenda, which I can go ahead and read the summary from the agenda and I'll kick it over to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, yes. So item three on our agenda is a public hearing for zone change request case one dash twenty twenty one Anderson from E Retail to double O Planned Office District. I'm sorry, E Retail and double O Planned Office District to double E Planned Retail District. The property is located at seven eight six seven seven eight seven seven and seven eight eight seven Beauchamp Avenue. Filed by Douglas Compton, DJAC Partners LLC on behalf of Dennis M. Corellis, seven eight seven seven Beauchamp Avenue LLC and the Anderson Township Board of Trustees. They are the property owners. The applicant is proposing to remove one existing commercial building and renovate another into a new restaurant with outdoor dining and parking. Okay, Paul, please, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as Mr. Ellis stated, the applicant is proposing a rezoning from E Retail double O Planned Office to EE, which is Planned Business Retail for the purpose of renovating the corner property, which is currently used as Anderson Automotive into a restaurant with indoor and outdoor patio seating. The white building formerly East Side Audio would be demolished. And then the rear of the property, which is the township owned property, would be used for additional parking and across access drive to the property to the west. The applicant is also requesting a setback. This will be a front yard setback for the outdoor patio canopy to the right of way of King Louis Court. This would be a ten foot front yard setback where thirty feet is required. Next slide, please. The site history, again, there are three properties. Seventy eight sixty seven was constructed in nineteen sixty. It was originally used, many of you probably remember it as Corellis Interiors. And then in twenty thirteen, it became East Side Audio. In seventy eight seventy seven, Beauchamp has always been an automotive type use. It was constructed as Tuffy Auto Repair. It went to Napa and then currently is being used as Anderson Automotive. And then seventy eight eighty seven is the property that's owned by the township. This was purchased in May two thousand and seven, really for the sole purposes of facilitating cross access, which was a recommendation of the Beauchamp Plan. At the time it was purchased, there was a single family home. The township demolished his home. It was also Zone C, single family, and the township rezoned the property to OO Planned Office with a, the intention of a small medical office or small office with associated parking. The property was offered for sale, but it was never purchased. And so the structure in the parking lot was never constructed. Next slide, please. So the case history, this zone change request was first heard April the first twenty twenty one by Regional Planning, who made a recommendation of approval with the six conditions that you see there on the slide. Next slide, please. This is a property map of the site in question. Again, the corner property seventy eight seventy seven at Beauchamp and King Louis, that is the Anderson Automotive Building, and that's the building that will be renovated for the restaurant. Seventy eight sixty seven is a Corellis building, which would be demoed and used for the access drive and parking. And then the rear property seventy eight seventy eighty seven is the township owned parcel. Next slide. The red on the map represents retail zoning, whether a PUD or just straight retail. The blue is the planned office. The orange is planned multifamily. There are apartments at the end of King Louis Court, and then the yellow is single family zoning, which is Immaculate Lane. This is an aerial of the site in question. Just to point out on the aerial, yeah, sorry, sir, I have to go back there. So King Louis and Beauchamp, on the opposite side, that is City Bird. The adjacent use at seventy eight sixty three, that's Puppywood. Seventy eight fifty seven was Cleaner Concepts, which the zoning commission approved the PUD there for KFC, which was a recent case. And then twelve sixty eight is a single family home. That's the end of Immaculate Lane. Thank you. Immaculate does terminate at some condos which do not have access to Beauchamp. That is their access. So I just wanted to point that on the aerial across the street on the north side of Beauchamp. You have Batteries Plus. You have the Amerestop Shopping Center and Immaculate Hard Mary. Next slide, please. This is the topography map. The topography slopes to the south generally, but it is a gradual slope. Next slide, please. These are some site photos looking west on Beauchamp Avenue at the building that will be demolished. Next slide. This is looking east toward the intersection of King Louis and Beauchamp, toward City Bird. This is looking on King Louis, looking to the north toward Beauchamp Avenue, the existing building that will be renovated. And this is the building that will be demoed. And this is the vacant lot that's township owned currently. This would be the area that, well, we'll see the site plan that will show the cross access. So the next slide shows the site plan that is proposed. Again, the existing building will be renovated and remained. There is an outdoor patio area that's proposed that would front on King Louis Court, and that's the area that a front yard setback would be needed for ten feet versus the thirty feet. No setback variance is needed for the existing building toward Beauchamp Avenue. Their driveway off of Beauchamp Avenue is proposed right in, right out. And I'm sorry, it's a full access. This is, I believe it's. I'm sorry, it is a right in, right out. I'm getting myself, I'm getting ahead of myself. So it is proposed to be right in, right out, which is consistent with the Beauchamp Corridor Plan and consistent with ODOT Plans. There are two access points proposed off of King Louis Court. And then there is a proposed future cross access to property to the west. Next slide, please. This is the proposed landscaping plan. Next slide. And the lighting plan. The lighting plan is the foot candles are a little high on the southern property line, so these would need to be adjusted since it is adjacent to a residential zoning district. Next slide. These are the proposed elevations. This would be looking at the east elevation from King Louis, looking toward the building, and then the north elevation, so that would be standing on Beauchamp, looking toward the building. And you can see on the north elevation a little bit where the proposed outside seating area would be in the patio cover that would need the variance. Next slide. These are just the other views, the other elevation, the west elevation and the south elevation. And then the architectural renderings. So as we stated with a zone change, we look at zoning resolution compliance. We talked about the front yard setback off of King Louis, which we need a variance. The other sections on the next slide, these are not in compliance, but no variance is being requested. So parking screening, a screening is required from the parking that is adjacent to a residential zoning district. So the plan would need to be modified to ensure there's adequate screening and solid buffer. Next slide, access and parking setbacks. This section requires a thirty foot front or thirty foot setback to the first parking spot from the edge of pavement of Beauchamp, or I'm sorry, from the right of way. So the front two spaces off of Beauchamp Avenue do not meet this requirement. Illumination, we talked about the foot candles exceeding the minimum adjacent to a residential zoning district. We also look at the plan's consistency with the adopted township plans. The first one is our adopted comprehensive plan, which identifies the site for retail, general retail. And staff is of the opinion that this is consistent with the future land use as a nation. It's also consistent with the other chapters of the comprehensive plan, including economic development. The next slide. Land use and development, which encourages a reuse of existing structures, but also retail along the Beauchamp Corridor. And the proposed restaurant use along with the outdoor seating area is consistent with these recommendations. The Anderson Trails Plan, there is an existing sidewalk on Beauchamp Avenue that is proposed to remain. There is no sidewalk currently on King Louis Court, however, one is proposed with this development and is required. So there is a required connection on King Louis Court as well as Beauchamp Avenue. The design guidelines with the reuse of an existing structure, staff is of the opinion that it is consistent with the site planning, the outdoor spaces, as well as architecture. The architecture, again, they're renovating it, modernizing the building and using a setback, massing materials, color, et cetera. With the outdoor spaces, there is a very large outdoor seating area as well as a green area in the front of the building. They are not proposing any parking or anything at the, at the corner of Beauchamp and King Louis. So this is consistent as far as it's a green area. As you'll see in our staff report, we do recommend that additional landscaping or additional street furniture be added at that corner. The Beauchamp recommends cross access connection to properties to the west, and they are proposing this cross access connection. Later on in the recommendations, we do recommend that the cross access drive be realigned to make sure it lines up with the Kentucky Fried Chicken. Cross access, there's still a gap between those two properties, but currently as shown, the access drive would not line up. So we're recommending that that be looked at and realigned to match up with KFC. The other factor there is that currently is shown adjacent to the single family home on Immaculate Lane. And we're recommending that that be moved further north so that appropriate buffering could be achieved between the access drive and the single family home. Landscaping and mix of building materials are all consistent with recommendations from the Beauchamp Plan. Economic Development Committee submitted a letter of support, which is in your packet. So staff's recommendation is approval of a zone change from E Retail OO to EE. It's consistent with the future land use plan and the chapters of economic health and land use and development. It's compatible, the use is compatible with surrounding uses on Beauchamp, which are a mixture of retail, restaurant and office. An appropriate buffer is established between the residential uses to the south. The health and safety of the neighborhood and the township are maintained. And the proposed use of the site provides an opportunity for the applicant to realize a reasonable profit. These conditions were recommended by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. Number one, the plan shall be revised to comply with the requirements of the Hamilton County Thoroughfare Plan. Number two, a landscape plan in accordance with design resolution and condition number three below shall be submitted as part of the final development plan. Number three, additional streetscape elements should be considered up at the corner along the Beauchamp Avenue and shall be submitted as part of the final development plan. This could be a mixture of either landscaping or other street furniture or streetscape items. Number four, that a lighting plan that meets the minimum standards of the zoning resolution be submitted as part of the final development plan. Number five, that the parking lot shall be redesigned to provide a minimum of thirty foot setback for all parking spaces from the right of way of Beauchamp Avenue and King Louis Court. And number six, that the existing freestanding sign on the property shall be removed. And any proposed signage shall be submitted as part of the final development plan. And the reason why this condition was placed on there with the additional right of way dedication, that would put the existing sign in the right of way, so it will need to be moved outside of the right of way. These are recommendations from Anderson Township. A vehicular easement shall be made for cross access to properties to the west and recorded prior to issuance of a zoning certificate. And number two, that the cross access drive be modified to match the location of the cross access drive located at seventy eight fifty seven. So that is the staff report recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks a lot, Paul. That was a really great report and information. And right now, if there's anybody on the zoning commission board that has questions for Paul or Sarah on this, please go ahead.
Yep, this is Jay.
Go ahead, Jay.
Paul, you mentioned that you're gonna have a right in and right out. If you're going westbound on Beauchamp to prevent a left turn into the property, not using the King Louis Court, is there gonna be like triangular pavers that don't allow people to make a left turn in?
They are showing a striped area currently. But we may want to clarify that with the applicant, if that would be a raised median or if they would also include signage.
Yeah, sort of something like they have at BP at the corner of Five Mile.
Yes.
Okay. And as far as Immaculate Lane, for the notification that we're rezoning or possibly rezoning this, how many neighbors, how far down did it go on the street as far as notification of this meeting tonight?
Sarah, was it two or three? Do you remember? It's two hundred feet from the property line.
And how many houses does that entail?
I'm pulling it right now. Give me a second.
While you're looking for that, the other question I had is if the lineup of the cross easement or whatnot, do they need to match up with KFC or they can mutually agree to line up?
I think our thing would be to line up with KFC because there's a separation between that drive and the single family property. So this would slap more, this would allow a buffer between the cross access drive and that single family home.
And we know exactly where KFC has set up, where their driveway or their easement would be, correct?
They have not submitted for their zoning certificate yet, so we submitted in a
There could be some
commission, but we don't have the exact location. We haven't issued the zoning certificate yet.
Okay, so they could mutually agree to where it should be?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And just keep in mind, too, there's still a gap there. Puppywood owns a little sliver of property through there, so it won't be a full connection yet, but the goal, and hopefully in the future, either with redevelopment or perhaps the owner would change their mind and like to tie in.
But Puppywood's on the other end, other side of the, is on the west side, correct?
It's right here. If you can see where the pointer is, they own this piece.
Okay, okay. Sarah, did you find out how many houses?
Yeah, we notified five houses on Immaculate.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Okay, all right, thanks, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Henson, did you have any questions?
Yes, a couple. I think the most obvious and important question is, is fried chicken gonna be on the menu? No answer?
That is a good question. I'll be interested in hearing to that on the answer.
Anyhow, sorry for being silly. Paul, the question that I had was, I'm assuming it was probably like a streetscape improvement project, but the properties along Beauchamp that have sometimes the like Anderson Township branded stone wall and the landscaping that looks like it's been done by the township. Would this property potentially be a candidate for an improvement like that, or is the funding already gone for that? I, I'm not even sure how that came to be.
Well, we had two separate projects. The original one, the signalized intersections with public streets were chosen. This was a signalized intersection, but it, on the north side, it was into a shopping center. So it was the intersections of Nordike, Eight Mile, Asbury, Nagel, Forest, and then we did something separate at Beauchamp and Five Mile. I feel like I probably missed something there, but so that was one project and the township initiated and funded that. The other project was the Downtown Anderson Project, which is just west of here, from Asbury to the town center. And that was also funded through a grant by the township.
Okay, so I mean, it could be a future project, but there's no open ended funding like right now?
Correct. Both of those were through grants.
Okay.
Well, the first one, I think, two dollars, the second one was through a grant.
Okay. With a project like this, just going from automotive use to retail, like a restaurant, are there, does our zoning have any additional requirements? And I'm thinking about the environmental aspects with soil and water.
So that, that will be reviewed through the county agencies under the building permit review.
Okay, I think you answered my last question was that that is a right in, right only at Beauchamp. And I'm sure, I'm sure that'll come up later. So that's the last of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Henson. Ms. Jonas, what questions do you have for our staff?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Paul, my question is the staff report points out a, a good handful of site design detail issues like the lighting foot candles, alignment, correct buffering, placement of some of the parking spaces relative to right of way. Are those all issues we would expect to see corrected in a final development plan?
Right, that's correct. So the purpose of the zone change hearing is to validate the appropriateness of the requested zoning district.
Very good. Yes, and Puppywood. Yeah, I was noticing we're so close to achieving with the one we did last month, the Kentucky Fried Chicken and the, this new project and the township owned property, and there's a little gap in Puppywood there. I remember quite a few years ago, I think we had them in for a variance on something and maybe a setback because of it's a, it's a animal use or something, but is there, do we have any, we, the township, have any rights to cross over their property right now? Is there anything in place at this time?
No, we don't have any rights to cross over their property. We've been in discussion with the property owner and will continue those discussions, but right now it's not interest in tying it.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that, that's all my questions. Thank you. Brian, oh, go ahead, Jay, or Mr. Lewis.
Paul, with, with COVID, we saw a lot of retailers setting up tables like in the parking lot in the Anderson Center with a big ash and all that. Is there anything in our zoning code that puts barriers out there to protect the dining? Because this is proposed to have outdoor seating right on a King Louis Court.
No, we don't really have anything in the zoning resolution that would regulate that.
But when we hit the landscaping, obviously we can recommend. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that being done with the board questions done for now, let's go ahead and give the applicant an opportunity to present the case. The applicant is identified as Douglas Compton and trying to see, is Douglas on or somebody would like to present for the applicant?
Please go. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Barrett Talas. I'm an attorney with Keating, Meathen and Cleecamp here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you all for letting us get together remotely. This is becoming the new norm in this world and hopefully you don't hear my kids screaming in the other room as they're eating dinner. So apologies in advance if you do. Paul, thanks for going through the presentation. I'll keep this relatively brief as you did a very good job laying out what we propose to do. The short story version is we're pretty excited about this opportunity. It's going to demolish a, not the Dr. Bash my client's property, but a fairly unsightly building that sits right up on Beauchamp Avenue. We are taking a full access curb cut, limiting it down to right in, right out on Beauchamp Avenue, and then redeveloping the property, the existing building at seventy eight seventy seven Beauchamp for the new restaurant use. It's a pretty cool reuse of the building. When we saw the renderings, it was, it turned out a lot It's a pretty cool reuse of the building. When we saw the renderings, it was, it turned out a lot better than I think we thought it was going to be. The architects were able to capture the existing garage store concept and we'll be keeping those to create kind of the indoor-outdoor space. So it'll be a very modern looking, kind of updated building. You know, I think we're gonna start seeing a lot of restaurants going forward encouraging and wanting more outdoor dining. Fortunately, we're gonna capture this on the front end. The comments in the staff report, we have been through those comments, Paul and his team, both before the county meeting and as well again with the staff reports, just a couple of specific items, the planned access easement. We don't really have any material heartburn and trying to modify the patient of that to allow for a straighter shock connectivity. It's a little bit hypothetical at this point with the Puppywood property. We do have a little bit of space there so we can accommodate that request without having a material change to the layout or to the site. As I'm sure you all know, the retailers get a little funny about modifying the site plan, so we're trying to keep the changes to a minimum, but that doesn't take away any parking spaces, so that really shouldn't be an issue on that side. On the lighting issue, that that won't be an issue. We can get that plan updated to show compliance. But again, with the additional request for screening behind the detention pond, we can certainly make that happen as well. The one issue we will be asking the trustees to take a look at is the request for the right of way take. I know it's sort of county custom to request the property owner give up additional right of way. We don't really feel it's merited here. There was, the road was widened, I think within the past few years. Really what this does is cause us to eliminate a perfectly fine sign and pay additional cost to put up a new sign. Our tenant would prefer the sign be where it is. We think it's better visibility. But that's something we can continue the discussion on. We are requesting the small variance where the patio roof goes to allow for that. Questions here? That's really it. It's pretty straightforward. The parcels all will be consolidated. Assuming the zoning is approved and our client closes on the property that is under contract with the township, all the parcels will be consolidated into one legal parcel and the development can proceed. And we're happy to answer any questions. My client and their construction representative are on the call. I think they may have their cameras off, but they are on the call if you have any questions for the developer or any development specific questions.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot, Mr. Tallis. Does anybody on the zoning commission have a question for Mr. Tallis? Or he also said that his team is on the call as well. Mr. Lewis, did you have any questions? I'm not hearing you, Mr. Lewis, if you're muted or not. We'll try Mr. Henson.
Just a quick question for the applicant and it pertains to the open space there in the northeast corner. Do you or the client have any plans to use that space for anything other than a yard? I know the setback issues might make it difficult, but it does seem sort of strange to see like a grass plot with nothing in it in front of a restaurant use. So I'm just
Yeah, no, there's no current plan for that. We got the setback issue there, so there's really no spot for parking. They didn't want us to, they're not gonna want us to block the visibility of their building. It would likely be landscaped and just kind of, kind of leave it as there. You know, if we were building this building new, my guess is it would probably be a little closer to Beachmont Avenue. But that's, you know, it's not this property. It's not happening here. So no, I don't think there's any immediate plans to make it, you know, additional dining or anything along those lines.
And Paul, this sort maybe goes back to you, but the plans, the elevations and the renderings don't show any signage on the building. Would we just be looking at that in final development plan phase?
All right, that's correct. They can submit during the final development plan if it's in the requirements of the zoning resolution, 20% of the facade, then it's kind of optional because they can have up to 20% of the facade.
And there will be signage on the building. Their request for signage on the building, I'm sure.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Henson. Ms. Jonas?
Hi, Mrs. Jonas, I just have a quick question. Would you guys consider putting the concrete ballards, kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Lewis said, you know, on King Louis Court, maybe between, you know, the sidewalk and the patio, just because it is so close to Beachmont for the safety of everybody eating outside?
Yeah, I think that's something we'd be happy to take a look at. You know, we're the developer, not the operator, so I think that's something we would probably defer to what our tenant thinks is necessary for for safety. Not a terrible idea. Fortunately, King Louis is a side street, so it's probably not too active of a street, but never hurts to have additional safety. I don't know how much room is there. Once you start adding in the sidewalk, I think you'd have to be a pretty errant driver to drive into the patio there, but yeah, that's certainly something to take a look at and discuss with the end user here.
And just one last question. The trash enclosure, is the same materials from the building gonna be around that area too? Because I don't
I don't know the answer to that question. Brad Cop, if you're on the line, do we know the material yet for the trash enclosure?
I don't know if we've delved that deep, but, but, and I'm not sure, I'm trying to picture it on the drawing, but that's not uncommon for us to match, at least in the material or the color scheme for the dumpster enclosure.
And Brad, this is Brian again. Just for the record, I know Mr. Tallis introduced you, but could you state your name and address and your relationship, please, with the project?
Sure. My name is Brad Cop. My address is 1448 East Stoker Court in Loveland, Ohio, 45140. And I am the VP of Construction for the developer here.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for that.
For the record, he's the one that called when you're not happy with something.
I don't know who said that.
That was me there.
Oh, Mr. Tallis, okay. And Ms. Jonas, please continue.
I think those are all my questions right now.
Okay, yeah. And Mr. Lewis, did you have some questions?
Yeah, I guess, is the tenant being, has the tenant been identified? And do we know their hours of operation?
Yes, the tenant has been identified. It is a standard restaurant operation. It's not a bar.
But is it 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM? I mean, seven days?
I don't know their operating, exact operation, because I would be surprised if they're open until 2:00 AM. We're not asking for any relief in whatever the standards are.
I just want to get a ballpark for the rest of
Sorry, that's my dog. I would venture to guess they're probably 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM would be my guess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I would, I'll direct this question to Mr. Tallis. I mentioned to Paul Drury, our director, that there are a number of site design details that he commented on in the staff report. You did mention some concern with the sign. That, the sign aside for a second, do you foresee any issues with some of these, I guess, fairly typical site?
No, no, we don't. Like I said, I think the bigger, the biggest ones was the relocation of the access easement drive aisle, which we can work through. There's some flexibility on space there. And then adding the additional screening behind the detention pond, that's not a big deal to do. Any unique landscaping items or anything to that nature, you know, plant selection, material selections, et cetera, that all will be, you know, hashed out of the finalized, the final development plan. But no, no, no material issues there.
Okay, and then the sign, isn't there quite a large, what is the sign out there now? It's like a two post, quite a large sign, isn't it, for toughy right now? Or what is out there? You know, Mr. Tallis?
We had, there was a picture of there earlier. I believe it's just a single small sign with one pole coming out of it. Paul, if you could go back, I'm fairly certain it's a single pole. We had a picture in there somewhere. I mean, the issue is that the sign is there today. It's allowed today. It's not in the right of way. It only gets into the right of way when we're forced to give up additional property. And all that does is take away the sign our tenant wants and it adds development costs to the project. Yeah, right, right there. And you go back. Obviously, I think there's that wall and the shrubs would all be cleaned up. But I mean, you can just look down the road. I mean, the sign is identical to all the other signs that are in this area.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's something, I guess this isn't a question, but you can discuss that with the staff as you, assuming all goes forward, because I know they're trying to get some improved sign design. That's obviously appropriate for when it was toughy decades ago. But now we're trying to, you know, kind of dress those things up a little bit and get a little bit more modern signage along there. And I won't ask a question. I'll just leave that there. Thank you. Did anybody else on the commission have anything from Mr. Tallis and the applicants? Okay, then we will now, Paul, if you agree, we can open this up to anybody who is on the call that is a concerned citizen, adjoining property owner, anybody that has a comment on it, please speak up. I'll go ahead and recognize you if we have several people try and speak at the same time. And we'll ask you to identify yourselves and say what's on your mind. So is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? We'll just give it a second here because it's a little bit clunky sometimes. Okay, Sarah, Paul, I'm not hearing anybody. I see quite a few people on, but that could be for other cases. Say, ask one more time if anybody from the public has a comment. Okay. Not hearing any other comments from the public. Paul, at this time, shall we go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing?
Yes, if no zoning commission members have any additional comments.
Okay. Yeah, does anybody else on the commission have a comment? Or question? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and
So we're gonna go through this and then, but we'll get the final development plan that would address some of the other specific concerns, if you would, about you know, signage and markings and whatnot and landscaping. We're just concerned with the rezoning at this point.
That is, that's correct, yes. And there are recommended conditions, both from regional planning and from township staff.
Right, the six from Hampton County, regional planning and the two from staff.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thanks. And then the requested variance for the setback of the overhang.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have a further question or comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. And now it's time for discussion among the zoning commission. For a lot of good questions so far, I guess we'll turn it over to Mr. Henson. Would you like to, you know, if you have anything, you don't have to say anything, but if you have comments or a viewpoint you'd like to share, please go ahead.
No, I think, I don't have any follow-up questions, but I do want to piggyback on both Jay and Sarah's comments that, you know, there is a variance being requested for the setback for the patio, which may not seem too consequential, but it does move the seating area very close to the street and you know, I'm assuming, you have to kind of think that a setback requirement like that, not that it's direct intention is to create that space from traffic, but an indirect benefit of a setback like that is that, you know, a car that does happen to be errant would have a little bit more time to correct itself or do something to avoid hitting those patrons. So I definitely would like to see whether it's, I don't want to be prescriptive, but whether it's a wall, but, or concrete planters or ballards or some kind of hardware there that would protect those patrons a little bit if we are going to approve the variance for that setback. The other comment that I had was again, I think picking back in on Jay again with the right in, right only off of Beachmont that striping is probably not at all sufficient to prevent people from using that as a full ingress, egress. So I do think that also there, whether it's a little curb or other type of streetscape hardware, something does need to be added there at some point to make sure that patrons are only using that as a, I love the term, the re-row, but those are, those are my two comments.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Jonas, what is your comments?
I don't have anything, I think, at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Lewis, please go ahead.
Okay, I agree with what Ben was saying with the prior points about the right in, right out and with the, you know, something to stop whatever, how creative we can be with the wall or the concrete planters, whatnot. The other thing I would just mention that we do use these variances in zoning. When we turn over the property or rezone it in the signage, we try and get everyone in compliance with the new signage. We don't do grandfathering per se, so just lessons learned. We will be looking at the signage going forward when it gets to the final development plan. Just an FYI.
Very awesome. Thank you. My comments are not too much. Exciting proposed reuse, obviously. Don't want to lose sight of that. I'm hopeful that should everything proceed smoothly at this board and the trustees, we'll see most of these things, the site detail comments cleaned up. So we're not hopefully having a lot of debate and discussion on some of these small details, which I think Paul and Sarah did a wonderful job of laying out with a lot of clarity. I also think, yeah, I am scratching my head a little bit on that right in, right out. With the really fantastic proximity to the light right there, which is, makes the site very usable. And I wonder a little bit about a right out coming out of there, the right in and see some value to that. So it might be helpful to hear from somebody from ODOT or somebody who would give us some technical expertise on the necessity of that, first of all, and then second of all, several of the zoning commissioners have commented that as we, as we all know, striping usually does not make a real strong statement when it comes to, you know, limiting those those movements. So that's all my comments on that. And I'd add to you, I really appreciate the work that Anderson Township is doing and Paul and his staff to accomplish these access drives in the back. And in particular, I hope that Puppywood, I think they will recognize what a value that could be to be able to share in that rear drive, especially for people trying to get out of there and go westbound. I think it'd be a tremendous benefit for them, for sure. So with that, I guess, so what we're looking for this evening is motion creating a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. The staff has laid it out on pages pages four and five of the staff report of they are recommending approval when they've laid out six conditions of the county that they would like to see in our motion as well as two additional conditions. First and foremost, approving that. And then secondly, they are recommending, in addition, that we approve the variance to allow the setback reduction for the outdoor seating area. And I've heard quite clearly some comments from the zoning commissioners that they'd like to see some with that variance, perhaps some in the final design, some protection along there for the patrons. So would somebody like to try and put together a motion? That would be fantastic.
Paul or Brian, is it? Am I able to ask a question of the applicant or at this stage?
I'm totally fine with that, if that would help.
It's just that one of the the county's requirements is to push the parking back off of King Louie that 30 feet. And I just wanted to ask the applicant, I see the future parking over there in the southwest corner that could be added, but you mentioned earlier that you do not want to comply with that request. Is that correct?
Are you talking about the parking up at King Louie? That's not where the dedication is being asked for.
Right, right, yes.
The the dedication is up was up off of Beachmont. And then just to note where we've got that future additional parking that probably goes away in order to satisfy the planning staff's comment to align our drive aisle with the future KFC, because it'll probably go to the north into those parking spaces.
Paul, am I reading the Hamilton County recommendations incorrectly? Because it looks like they are asking for the setback off of off of King Louie.
So the parking spaces off of King Louie do not meet that 30 foot setback. So yes, it would be both the from the right of way of King Louie as well as the right of way of Beachmont. And the ten of that requirement is to prevent someone from backing up and blocking access off of a public street is to allow for yeah, that spacing to get someone off of the street so that they're not, you know, backing up traffic.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify is that if we adopt the recommendations as they are, then the client is going to, the applicant's going to lose that parking. So I was just asking the applicant if the additional parking that you're showing over there, if you're going to be able to meet your your requirements, if that condition is met.
So, you know, that's somewhat of an open ended question, right? Because the way these deals work in the real world is we've committed to our tenant to design a site that meets their needs. And as you can imagine, they want as much parking space as possible. With King Louie Court being a dead end street and with it being ample spaces there, we think those spaces work and we'd like to be able to keep those. It's sort of a problem of everything, right? It's when we we go back and say, hey, we have final approval. Does this work? Then that's made to go back and make a decision. So we have a deal in place, but it is contingent upon the rezoning and the final development plan being approved in a manner that they can't accept.
Right. You're looking to lose maybe five spaces with that and you have five shown next to the crash enclosure. So could we meet with the clients' needs and the counties by moving that parking over there?
No, because the per the county's request, we can't, they want, that's where we kind of get into things, some very thing. If we have to move the drive aisle to catch up with future potential KFC. You know, those spaces, there's no room, the spaces are going to have to go away. I would take a look at it with our plan and see if there's a little more flexibility there. But that's the potential concern. You know, every time we go back to them, it adds deal cost and it adds, you know, a little less what they want. Now, I don't think that's a huge issue back to property, but you know, we'll sort of have to see what they said.
Probably I'd say, Mr. Henson, that's a great, that's a great point you bring up. I I would question and I would be comfortable if we deleted that number five with regard to the setback from King Louie because it's a fairly low intensity street. And Beachmont's another issue, but I I'm not sure I see value necessarily in deleting those spaces that are right near King Louie.
And I agree. I just wanted to make sure that the motion didn't go forward with the language as it is.
Right, so the motion would be to adopt the Hamilton County conditions with the modification to number five that the 30 foot setback for parking not apply to King Louie.
Yes, and if possible, I would like to add a requirement, a condition for the some protection of the patio if we're going to approve that setback request.
All right, well, you want to try and put together a motion? That sounds pretty good. I think you've done, you've already done it. Just re-say it.
I'm not nearly as eloquent as Ann and I always get bummed out when she's not here because I like her motions that she makes. But yes, that would be the motion that I would be making is to adopt to approve the staff and Hamilton County recommendations as presented, striking number five and adding an additional requirement for streetscaping hardware protection of the patio from King Louie Court. And Paul, I don't know if it's really couth at this point to talk about improving the right in right out. That's probably final development because that's not really necessarily related to the variance request.
I think you could add it now or or the final development plan. And but just back to number, you said strike number five completely. Are you saying not to have the 30 foot setback for the spaces off of way of Beachmont?
See, I told you, Paul, I'm not good at this.
That's all right. I just wanted to.
King Louis Courts.
Okay, so just the King Louie Court. And also ultimately, you're recommending approval of a variance for that article of zoning resolution.
Yes, by default, I think it would be.
Okay.
Okay, so so we've got a motion to approve by Mr. Henson modifying condition five of the county to eliminate the 30 foot setback from King Louie. Also, I'd like a condition that there be shown in the final development plan. Some protective barriers for the outdoor seating. So those conditions and also adopting the two conditions of Anderson staff. So there's that motion to approve the requested rezone. And so just hold that thought. And Paul, we are not, you said something about a variance being implied in that. Are you talking about the variance for this outdoor seating as well? Because I'm not quite hearing it that way.
No, I'm sorry. There would be a variance for the setback of the parking spaces off of King Louie.
Okay, all right. So it's a motion for it's a motion for approval with those conditions modified, as I just stated. And included in that is a variance that is approving not having the required setback from King Louie Court. Is there a second?
I guess just for clarification, so there's two variances. One that staff recommended and one that the zoning commission is offering.
He just has done one variance. We can do the the other variance in a minute separately.
Well, why wouldn't it be part of the same motion?
He can make it part of the same motion if he wishes. He just has not stated that yet.
I, Brian, I thought that I did when Paul asked the question.
Okay. I apologize and so there is a motion to, there is a motion to approve.
Yeah, I want Sarah to reread it.
Do you want me to read it out of the minutes? Okay.
Please.
So Mr. Henson moved to approve case one dash 2021 Anderson for seven eight eight seven Beachmont Avenue based on staff in Hamilton County recommendations and conditions with the removal of condition number five in regards to King Louie Court. Therefore, recommending a variance for parking. I'll, I need to find the article. And adding a condition for streetscaping and protective items for patio safety is what I have so far.
Okay, and Mr. Lewis is asking him to also include now the requested variance for the setback for the outdoor seating.
Yeah, the 30 feet to 10 feet, I believe.
Yeah, correct.
So would you like to add that approval of that variance as well, Mr. Henson?
Yes. I, and yes, because I thought I was.
Okay, that's what I thought. That I just want to make sure. I will second that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Elif?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And the applicant, Mr. Talis, can be in touch with Paul for scheduling your next hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you all. Have a great night.
Okay, good night. Everybody click off here for a second. Okay, Paul, you're ready to move on to the next case?
Yes, thank you. So the let me, let Sarah catch up to the slide.
Thank you.
So this is a final development request in case two, 2018 for Skytop Phase Two, and the location is at 5218 Beachmont Avenue. The applicant is Mark Rosenberger of Bear and Becker, who's representing Metropolitan Holdings. Who is representing Woodstone Four Holdings, Skytop LLC property owner. The zoning there is EE, Planned Retail. And again, this is a final development request. So the purpose of tonight's meeting for the zoning commission is to review the final development plan to ensure consistency with what was presented during the zone change and the conditions that were placed on on the zone change. So how, we'll go through a little bit of the history, but I'll go through that fairly quickly. And how the presentation is set up is that we have the approved zone change resolution from the trustees and the conditions, and we've outlined whether the submitted final development plan is consistent or not consistent with those conditions. Sarah, if we go to the next slide, please. So the proposed development was to raise and or demolish the existing shopping center and construct a residential apartment community with 361 units. This includes structured parking as well as one level independent garage. It's not a parking garage, but in small garages for parking. In addition to landscaping as well as a trailhead. Next slide, please. The history, again, the existing building was constructed in 1999. And there were, it was this variance for the existing sign, although that was not continued during the zone change. Next slide, please. You can see the previous history of the case. Originally, it was rezoned in 2018. And then a substantial modification was brought before the zoning commission to change the footprint and increase the size of the apartment building. Next slide, please. Next slide. The original, the zone change was approved in February. So this is the site plan and and not much of anything has changed from the site plan that was presented to you during the zoning change hearings. So we can go to the next slide. The landscape plan has been separated into two plan sheets so that you can see the detail of the landscaping. And staff is of the opinion that the landscape plan is compliant with the zoning resolution as well as the approving zone change resolution. Next slide. This is the area. So the first slide was to the right of the main entrance. This is to the left. And this particular part of Beachmont, it's hard to decide what's north and what's south, but I think we're calling this the the west parking area. Next slide, please. There was, again, originally, the applicant was proposing to reuse the existing sign and was requesting a variance to keep it. The variance was denied, so this is a revised sign that is consistent and compliant with zoning. The maximum square footage permitted at this site was 100 square feet, and this is right at 99 square feet. The maximum height is 15 feet, and this is also 15 feet. And as you could see, the design of the sign has been modified to match the architectural style of the building. It provides for signage, not only for the apartment building, but also for the commercial tenants and the outlots. They are also proposing to move the sign closer to the right of way, closer to Beachmont Avenue, but it is compliant with regulation. Next slide, please. So these are the elevation drawings, and I'll let the applicant discuss this in more detail. But there is a mixture of building materials, as you can see, and a mixture of colors as well as lighting enhancements for the building. Next slide, please. And we can, like I said, we can come back to this if you have specific questions for the applicant. I'm sure they can present it better than I can and explain. So these are the other sides of the buildings. The first one was the front of the building. These are the other sides and showing the mixture of building materials. This is toward the rear, right? If you go back, Sarah, sorry. So in the right hand corner up at the top, you can see the the one, two, three. So this was an area that was discussed heavily during the public hearings because this is the side that's most visible, visible to the Signal Hill community adjacent. So you can get an idea of what the elevations would be for that that side of the building. So this was the approving zone change resolution from the trustees. So and these are in order from the conditions that were placed on there. And if you want to go back to some of the exhibits, we can. So the first one was that a detailed landscaping plan that meets the minimum standards of design resolution shall be submitted as part of the final development plan. And as you could tell, staff is of the opinion that it is compliant, the specified plant list and location of the planting meets all the requirements of design resolution. Number two, that all requirements of the Ohio Department of Transportation shall be met. So the applicant submitted that their traffic study was submitted to ODOT on April the first. They are still waiting for final approval. So we haven't received that yet, but once that is if the zoning commission did approve the final development plan, we would withhold the zoning certificate until that has been met. Next slide. Number three, the exterior of the proposed enclosure containing a compacted dumpster and space for bulk storage shall match. So elevation drawings are submitted for the detached garages as well as the dumpster enclosure and storage. And these elevations match the architectural style and materials of the building. The applicant also stated that they are proposing to add additional bicycle parking as well. The number four, future expansion shall be subject. So that would be something that we would bring back to the zoning commission if an expansion were proposed. Number five, the signage plan be submitted. So there was the detailed information for the freestanding sign, which is compliant. The applicant has shown the area for wall signage, but has not shown the exact elevation drawing of that. So that would need to be compliant with design resolution. So staff notes, we recommend approval of the final development plan with the following conditions. Number one, which speaks to future expansions. Number two, a photometric plan compliant with Article 5.3K of the zoning resolution. Number three, that bicycle parking spaces be provided. Number four, that all requirements of ODOT also be met, including modifications to the west cross access drive. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Paul, this is Brian. Before we get into questions on our agenda, this portion is This portion is labeled a discussion for final development plan. Am I reading that correctly that this is to proceed with your presentation, which you just did? Questions to you from the zoning commission? Information from the applicant with regard to your report and conditions. And then discussion among the board members culminating in a motion on the final development plan. In other words, there's been several public hearings with public input and discussion. But that is not part of this discussion and decision. Is that correct?
And that's correct. Yes, this is discussion between zoning commission staff and the applicant.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. So we heard Mr. Drury's remarks. And who has any questions for Paul on this? Ms. Jonas, would you like to go ahead if you have any?
Sure, I just had one question. Will the address be at all on the signage? Because Article, where is it? Article five point five G one G states any freestanding sign being permitted shall include the street number of the property no less than four inches high. Do you, will there be something like that on there?
Yes, it is a requirement, so they will need to add that prior to us issuing a zoning certificate for it.
Okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's all my questions right now for staff.
Okay, thanks. And if you think of something else, you can jump in. It's no problem. Mr. Lewis, what did you think about this? Or did you have questions for Paul, I guess?
A question for Paul. I know we had a lot of discussion in the past about this with the drive aisle, the the width. And I don't have my notes in front of me of what where we left at last. Are they now in compliance with the the standard distances, the code?
The zoning commission approved some variances, and so they are in compliant with the variances that were.
With what we approved.
Correct, yes.
Previously, okay, great. I had no other questions for staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henson, questions for staff?
My question, Paul, I think you already answered, was just that with the status of the traffic impact study, the zoning certificate will be held until all of those issues are resolved. And it's a little bit out of our hands, but they're not going to get the certificate until that's taken care of.
That that's correct. We would make sure all the conditions of the final development plan were met before we issued the zoning certificate.
Great.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Mr. Henson. My question is I was a little, it was kind of funny when I saw the proposed condition for, which I completely agree with about future expansion. But I don't, I don't see any room for future expansion. Was that, did I miss something there that that there could be future expansions here, or what's going on there?
That that was just a recommendation from the zoning commission as well, and carried over through the trustees as part of the zone change resolution. So I I agree. I mean, they are maxed out on parking right now, so accommodations would need to be made in order for, and there really wasn't a discussion of expansion, but the zoning commission did place that condition on there.
Okay, yeah, I must have missed that one, but I guess it can't hurt. It doesn't hurt anything, that's for sure. And then there was a a ton of discussion on the traffic impact study and gosh, I was just hoping that we would have ODOT saying everything looked good at this point. And I understand that's not our scope necessarily, but one thing that the applicant was going to do was ask ODOT because of the neighbor's concern if ODOT felt it was necessary to expand the scope of the traffic study to go down thirty-two to catch where the adjoining subdivision outlets. Because although I'm not sure necessarily the zoning commission felt that that was going to be impacted, some of the residents did, and I think they were going to at least consider that. Do you know if anything came of that question?
So they did. Bear and Becker, and I believe that they are on the line if you have more questions, but they did ask ODOT, and they did review the traffic counts. ODOT determined that it was not necessary to expand the traffic impact study. So the study was agreed upon, and then they did submit it to ODOT on April the first. But yes, that that was asked of ODOT, and they did look at those numbers. And it was determined the impact from this development did not warrant improvements on thirty-two.
I I appreciate that information. Mr. Lewis has a question.
Yeah, just that something I have not driven that that stretch since I believe there was a new signal added the last, I probably since April first, since the the ODOT submission. Where is that light in relation to all this?
It it's for construction only. It's temporary. It's only. Right, it's just for the, they're constructing the the bicycle path, the Miami Bike Trail across the the bridge. It's for construction purposes only.
Okay, thanks a lot, Paul. Okay, is there any other questions for the staff? And if not, we can move on to applicant. All right, is there somebody from the applicant? If you could identify yourself, please, and you know, state your relation to the case and why you think we should approve the final development plan?
Yes, I'm Andrew Wapner with Metropolitan Holdings. I was here at the prior presentations, and I don't really have anything further that I'd like to present other than answering questions that the commission may have for us.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot, Mr. Wapner. Did did anybody on the commission? We recall Mr. Wapner being here and having a lot of questions to answer last time, and he's back with us. Mr. Lewis, what would you like? Go ahead, please.
Well, it seems like there was, there was two outstanding issues that it seemed like to be in control of the applicant that are still up. But one is just the number of bicycle spaces. The second is the plan for the signage on the on the building. Can you speak to what's the delay or what we're waiting on?
The spaces were in oversight. We we intended to add some spaces closer to the to the building, and they just didn't get added to the plan. But we intend, we intend to add those. We let staff know.
Do you have a number of spaces just for?
I I believe it was, I can't remember, I can't recall. We we stated it in the email. I don't want to miss misstate. But it was probably something around like six to eight spaces, if I recall.
Okay.
Because we will have bike storage likely in the building for residents. So the, what we talked about with with Paul and Sarah was that there would be likely be some guests who may become via bike on the bike trail. And so it's really just to accommodate those those folks.
All right, the second question about the signage.
Yeah, so we've just engaged a graphic designer to work on the logo, so we don't really know like what the font is going to be and what what the text up there is going to be at. So we've identified the space that it's allowed to occupy and how big it can be. And we know that it can be no bigger than that. But we don't have the final, we just don't have final graphics yet.
But obviously, you're being compliant with the.
Yeah, our our tendency to be in compliance with the area allowed.
Okay. Those are my only questions.
And we're likely to be significantly under. It's a rather large area that we're allowed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, Mr. Lewis. So we're posing questions to Mr. Wapner, who is the applicant. Mr. Henson, do you have any questions? Mr. Wapner?
Just one. The shared access over in the sort of western southwestern corner was a topic of discussion. As I understood, you were still in the negotiating with the other property owner, but I'm it's shown on the final development plan. Has there been any progress made there? Do you have an agreement in place or?
The agreement's not in in place yet, but there has has been progress. We're ironing out details of that agreement with the seller right now to present to Mr. Hettleston, the adjacent property owner. I have given him a heads up that we'll be contacting him about about that agreement, and he's he's indicated to me he's perfectly fine with that. He stated in front of the the trustees that there's been just kind of a gentleman's agreement in the past for the entire time he's owned it. And we're just trying to formalize that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Henson. Ms. Jonas, I know you didn't sit in on this case, but you might have been there. I can't remember. Did you have any questions on on this for Mr. Wapner?
I don't think I have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks a lot. Mr. Wapner, anything else for you right now?
Nothing, nothing for me, no.
Okay, okay, terrific. Okay, so we have heard from staff, posed questions to staff. We've heard and been able to answer some final detailed questions with Mr. Wapner. So we've completed our discussion. Staff is recommending approval. Paul, are we creating a motion of approval? Is that going to be our next step here for this?
Yes.
Or recommending approval? Or no, it'd be a motion of approval, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
Can you put this slide back up of the criteria from staff?
And while he's doing that, I'll just point out on page three of the staff report is the staff recommendations and notes where the staff recites that they believe that the application is consistent with the approving resolution from the Board of Trustees. And they are reciting for additional conditions the staff would like to see. There you see them up on the screen that staff would like to see included in a motion of approval. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Was there another word about another about the signage?
There was not a condition in regards to signage, because they had brought it into comply, that they had brought the freestanding one into compliance.
The signage on the building, not the freestanding.
There's, there's plan sheet noted that they were going to stay within the zoning resolution. But you you are more than welcome to add.
Yeah, we just want to throw that out in addition to these four.
Was this the slide that you were looking for, or was there a different one?
No, this is the one.
Okay.
May I ask a question? On when we, once we do have final graphics for that wall sign, do we come back to zoning commission, or is that a staff approval?
That can be a staff approval, so long as the wall is compliant with the zoning resolution.
Yeah, so that just being over the counter, as long as you're compliant with the minimum dimensions and stuff.
And and my understanding of number two, the photometric, we did submit one. My understanding is that staff just had difficulty reading this small text of the of the lumens on there. Is that correct?
That's correct. It just needs to be where we can read it.
No problem. No problem.
Zoomed in so far.
Hey, well, that's wonderful. Would somebody like to make a It would be wonderful. I bet we can make a better motion than we did in the last case, which would be a motion to approve adopting the four conditions as recommended by staff. If somebody would like to make that motion or tweak it a little bit, but that's the core of your motion, if you want to approve it.
I guess I could take a stab at it. I would like to a motion to prove the final development plan Phase Two of Case two dash two zero one eight for Skytop documenting the four staff recommendations and adding a fifth one that any any signage on the building signage be in compliance with submit upon submission.
Terrific. That's a very good motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. Ben.
There's some, thank you, Ben. There's a motion in the second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Alef?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's a marvelous looking project. We're excited to see it as it progresses, very much so. Okay, we'll wait a second.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll wait a second for everybody to click off. And then we'll go to the last case on the agenda. And I will ask you, Paul, if you could kind of go over the materials briefly. I did get them. Mr. Lewis did not get them. I don't know if.
Well, the question was, it wasn't available on the website for distribution, so.
So it was not, it was not posted on the website because it was not for public hearing. So it went in your packet. It just didn't make it in the zoning, or on the website.
So you got it in your package. Did you get it in your package?
No, they need to start mailing those to identified addresses.
Sorry about that. So
It's on the porch.
So this is in regards to case three twenty eleven PUD. This is the American Legion Post that's located on Clough Pike at sixty-six, sixty and sixty-six, sixty-two Clough Pike. So as part of that approval of the PUD, there was a condition placed on there, condition number thirteen. This says no remote speakers or sound system may be used outside the building. So we received an email from Dan Wolfangle, who's representing the post. They have been asked to host a fundraising event, a one-time fundraising event for hometown heroes. And because of the size of the crowd and because of the pandemic, they are hoping to have this in their parking lot, which will include music raffles, silent auction, and a food. The proposed date is Saturday, August the seventh, and the music would be from three PM to eight thirty PM. They were concerned that this would be a violation of one of those conditions. They are not asking for that condition to be removed completely. They are just asking to host a one-time event. And since this was a condition placed on on them by the zoning commission, I didn't feel that staff had the authority to make that call. So we wanted to bring it to you for discussion purposes to first to see if you felt that even with this one-time event, the spirit and intent of their approval resolution is still being met. Or if you feel that it's clearly a violation of approval, and you think that we would need a public hearing to discuss it, that's another option. Or the third option is really just, we feel that it's a violation of of the PUD. So we wanted to bring it to you to to ask you. They are only asking for a one-time event. They do realize if they want to have more of these, that it really needs to come back to the zoning commission for a public hearing to address that condition.
Paul, how do we handle like parades and festivals and, you know? Every every church has something going on.
So this was specific to their PUD request for the American. So it's not, you know, festivals at churches, they're never zoning issue. There's not a noise resolution in the township for this type of event. The only noise resolution is for construction purposes. It was just specifically a concern for this PUD request.
Okay. I mean, personally, I don't want to get into the, you know, plus cons and pros of what they're doing. I appreciate them coming and asking for, instead of asking for forgiveness, asking for approval. So I personally don't have any problem with a one-time event.
Yes, I agree with that. This is Brian speaking. I will note, however, on the email that it says, can we get a revision or a waiver for outside activities for the front parking lot for events such as this, or at a minimum, a waiver for the one day event? So, and I remember, I think Paul remembers this, I don't know if Sarah would remember this, but that the dog place next door, we had a variance case on that a while ago. And there were a lot of concerned neighbors that came out on that. So certainly, I would not feel comfortable really modifying that condition in any ongoing way. But certainly with COVID and people's plans getting just out of whack, I think in the, in the hours they're talking about a one-time thing, it's over at 8:30. I would be uncomfortable with this one-time exception, considering all the events we've been going through for the last year. Yeah. So I think, I think I would be comfortable with staff saying you could proceed with this one-time event.
Paul, what, what real, like, what authoritative mechanism are we going to utilize here for this?
How we would do that? I would just, we would document it, the discussion in the notes for the meeting in the minutes, and that we would get them, you know, the design commission discussed it and, and felt that it was okay, if that's what you ultimately choose. And Brian, just to clarify, so I did, and I did not provide this in your packet. When he sent the original email, I did reply to him and ask for clarification. And he did submit back an email saying it was just for the one-time event. So.
Okay, thanks a lot, Paul. I'm sorry about that. That, that's very good information.
Included that as well in the, in the packet.
What would the enforcement, what would the violation fee be?
So, I mean, ultimately, it's a zoning violation. The only way we can enforce zoning violations is through the court. We don't find for zoning, we can't find for zoning violations because we're township. I think, like Brian said, they're asking for approval instead of forgiveness. There was concern when this was brought originally before the zoning commission, especially for residents that live behind them up on top of the hill, because I guess there's been a history in the past of noise traveling up the hillside. So they were just concerned with multiple events out in the parking lot, amplified music and that sort of thing. I put a plug in for the Legion. They've, we, this is the first time they contacted this in about 11 years that we've ever had any, had any complaints. And they have abided by all their condition.
I would offer this. In the past, I was a DJ, or I hosted stuff for Air Elementary. We use Veterans Park. And we were asked to provide a list of the music, the type of music, and make sure there's nothing offensive in the, in the lyrics, because we were, you know, using the, the facility, the Anderson Parks. So not sure it's an issue here. It's FYI.
Yeah. And the event is supposed to end at 8:30, too. It's not as if they're asking to go to midnight or something.
Does anybody else have anything to say on it?
Any issues with a one-time event?
Yeah.
And to, I think, Brian, this was your question maybe. But Paul, the township doesn't have a, like an event, you know, that we can grant them for the day or anything?
No.
Like you for vendors that need to sell things without a business license?
No.
Okay. Something, something I've seen some places doing is, as Paul said, it's, it's really an enforcement question. And there's some clunkiness to enforcing the zoning. But there has been, I think maybe this is what Paul is looking for, comfort level. And I really do appreciate that Paul and Sarah have asked us this question rather than just making some kind of executive decision, which of course Paul's got a lot of authority to do as well is the authority with our zoning code. But he has brought it to us. But there are a good amount of, because of these unusual circumstances of zoning officials in the enforcement context, just saying, it's not necessarily consistent with the rules. But because of these unprecedented times, there is some latitude in the degree of how we're going to enforce things. And so I think it would be, I think I'm hearing from the zoning commission that we would feel comfortable in there not being enforcement of this provision for this one particular event in light of these difficult times. I think the zoning commission, from what I'm hearing, Paul, would be very comfortable with you expressing to the, to the VFW that to please go ahead with this one-time event. You certainly are not waiving that permanently as you clarified.
Yeah. And just following up on that, Brian, too, they, they even mentioned in their email that part of the need for this, too, is that the events have grown more and more successful. So if this one is even more successful, and they feel that, hey, an outdoor setting really pleases our guests, and we raised money, I do want to be on the record stating that we're going to have to address this in a different way going forward.
Yes, I think we'd all agree with that, for sure. Paul, do you need anything else from the commission as far as that goes?
No, that's, that's all. We'll make sure that it's clarified in the minutes. But I can go ahead and give them guidance that the zoning commission is okay with this one-time event due to the pandemic, really, the unprecedented time. And if they want to continue having these events in the future, we'll bring it back as a revision to their PUD. And it would be a public hearing for public input.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
We've come to the end of our agenda. Is there anything else, Paul, you'd like to share with us or?
No, that's, that's it. For good night, I think we will have a meeting in May. So if you'll please mark your calendars. If for some reason you can't attend, let no or Sarah know. It's May the 24th. But we are expecting a case or two. So.
Will that be in person or over electronically?
I think it'll just still be virtual for now. But we'll probably have that discussion again.
Okay. Have a great night, everybody. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I guess we do.
Your motion?
So moved.
All in favor, click off. Hi.
Good night.
Bye.